Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for Thursday, March 24th. All of our council is present. Mr. Thompson let us know that he was not going to be here today, so he's excused absence. The first item on our agenda is to say happy birthday, Dr. Apaya. Right? Isn't today Nana's birthday? So...
There's lingering in the hallways.
Yeah.
Happy birthday. Thank you very much.
We really appreciate you, Nana. You do a great job, and we hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
And just ironically, you're served up on the agenda today. Item one A on our agenda is a presentation to provide direction on the city's upcoming 10-year general plan update that will be submitted to the voters for ratification in the vote for in the 2024 election. So Director of Development Services, Dr. Apaya, thank you. What do we need to know about this?
Mayor Council, good morning. The general plan update is coming up, and every 10 years, the state requires the city to update its general plan and put it on the ballot for the voters to ratify it. So we are beginning the process. It's going to be about three extensive processes that involve, that is going to involve the council, various appointed and elected boards, various residents, stakeholders, development community, and all the various stakeholders in the city that you can think about, including all the various departments or major departments that are going to be involved. So with that, before I proceed, we do have transportation department here, we have water resources, we have economic development, we have community development, and so many other departments that help to implement the general plan. So with my presentation, because we are beginning the 10-year process again, and I know there are residents also listening and various stakeholders, I'm going to go through really what is the general plan, the authority of the plan, and the purpose, and basically the use of the plan, and why we need to update the plan. So that's what, and then the process that will be involved. So the question that typically get asked, I know we mentioned this a lot, especially in the planning and then the parks, transportation, we all typically refer to the general plan. And the question is, what is the general plan? So the general plan really is the official statement of the city that basically sets forth its major policies when it comes to desirable physical future development and special arrangement of the city. And what that means is basically anybody coming to Mesa or people living in Mesa or the community, they're supposed to know what our goals are for the development of our city. That's something that should be well communicated. And so whenever we're having any discussion relating to land use, transportation, parks, and all that, it comes back to what is this official statement that has been basically agreed on by all the various stakeholders. So where does the general plan gets its authority from? The state statute actually require municipalities to have a general plan. And with a city that is more than 10,000, there are also basic requirements or elements that are required to be in the plan. So the number one major requirement of the plan that it needs to express is state, the community goals because of all the parties that are involved, it needs to be very expressly stated. And then there is a land use element, also various, you know, if you look at our current general plan, various land use element, the characterizations and all that. However, when it comes to Mesa, which is over 500,000, there are specific requirements that we need to have in the general plan. One is open space element that identifies various open spaces, and also how we're going to provide open spaces and recreational elements as we increase in population or maintaining the existing one. One also is having an infrastructure plan that shows where growth is going to happen, and basically how we're also going to basically not amend, but keep the existing infrastructure as well. And then there is a public service element that is supposed to identify civic spaces, our community spaces and all that. And then the housing element that is supposed to address the need for housing, providing housing, and infill development and all those kind of elements. And there is a water element that is supposed to also show how we're going to be providing water resources to the, you know, increasing in population, projected developments and all that, and also how we're going to preserve those resources. In addition to the state statute, the city charter also requires us to have a general plan. And in the charter, it talks about the general plan is supposed to be a guide to land use decisions by various appointed boards and also help the city council in their decisions. And it is also to inform our infrastructure expenditure as we project growth, where it's going to go, and all that, we factor that in into our infrastructure plans as well.
Nana, before you leave that slide, the five bullet points there under what cities of over 10,000 have to do, open space, infrastructure, housing, water, that's all pretty, you know, I get that. What does public service element mean? And I see the parentheses there, civic and community, I'm just struggling to, what's some examples of that?
Libraries, so libraries are civic element, community centers, those are our civic elements.
Mayor, under the current general plan, it says city center, law enforcement, fire protection, healthcare, education, storm drainage, solid waste collection.
Wow, so I guess better ask what isn't under that element, right? I mean, it's pretty broad.
It's just, it's public services.
It's public services, public facilities.
How we're going to provide those.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Luna.
Happy birthday, Dr. [inaudible]. I think, so we have to update this every 10 years, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, because I was here when we did the, was it the 2040 plan?
Right.
So was that 20, was that?
So we did that.
2014?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so I was confused, but it goes up to 2040, right? So every 10 years we change, is that the...
Oh, go out another 10 years. Will this be the 2050 plan?
Mayor Council, that's what we are planning on, but one of the things is it's going to go through extensive council review discussion, and also discussion with the community and determine that if we will have to make it 2050, or you may have different view due to projected growth or some of the things you may be identifying.
Yeah.
So the plan is to vote on this 20...
24.
2024, that's correct.
Well, you can call the, Nana, are you saying that we can vote for it in 2024? The perspective of kind of the plan could be anything we decide?
That's correct.
So you, the council, from a policy perspective, could decide, we're going to take, even though this is voted on every 10 years, you could go to the community and say, this is our 2040 plan again, or this is the 2050, 20, it just kind of in the context of what you, the policymakers, how far out you want to kind of look at the plan? Because at some point, you know, the 3,000 plan probably doesn't have a lot of reality to it. So somewhere, we've got to figure out where that balance is, that this, because we do make decisions, obviously, right? Infrastructure, land use, that does have an effect for well beyond the 10 years, right? The 20, 30, 40 years out, and so I think that's just, that's a policy direction, it's not a statutory requirement that it goes out so far.
That's correct.
So one thing that I always get from developers, well, the general plan is only a framework, it's not specific, we're not tied to this, and is that really the case?
Mayor Council, that is not the case, because the general plan sets for the future desirable goals of the city. However, as I go through my presentation, you'll recognize that one of the characteristics or the kind of the purpose of the plan is for it to be kind of the overarching document to channel the goals of the city. So it's not really that specific compared to the zoning ordinance, and that is really, it says the goals, and sometimes there are various ways of achieving the goals, that's why it's not to the detail compared to the zoning ordinance.
But remember, Mayor Council, this is voted on.
Right.
And that's what we kind of use with, and the development community even today is kind of attacking general plans across the valley.
Right.
Because they're like, well, they're too restrictive, we can't put in multifamily anywhere we want to, because they always pull out the general plan. Well, the general plan was adopted by the community in a vote. So even as council thinks about how you establish this vision, it has to be voted on, we have to sell it to the community, right? We need to have that context, so, but it allows us to have the vision of the conversation. There are ways, there are ways to amend, have general plan, there's amendments that can happen during the year, but there's a process, it's not just a simple, you know, vote, but anyway, you can get into that later.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
So that leads to my question, as what is really the purpose of the general plan? I think I started by saying it helps to provide vision for the community and a strategy for achieving it. And one of the major thing it does, because it's voted on by the voters, but it requires extensive involvement of all stakeholders, including the development community, special interest group and all that, at the end of the day, it is geared to promote the public interest, not the interest of specific group or individuals. And it also helped the city to really inject long-range considerations into our current determination and policy decisions. And it helps to really facilitate democratic determination and basically implement the goals of the community, because we are involving all the community, this is really kind of the agreement that help to formalize or basically achieve the goals. And it is really also intended to promote economic vitality. So you will hear one of the elements in the general plan is economic resources and basically economic development, and it talks about the city's projected growth when it comes to economic development, the ratio that we want to achieve, and I'm sure Bill is here to speak more to that if we get to. And it's intended to also reduce the physical impact of growth, because without a structure way of managing growth and basically help to promote growth in an effective and efficient way, we won't be able to really manage the impact of those growth that is happening. So how do we use the general plan? You'll see a theme that will be going through my presentation. One of them is really to provide set of policies that will govern the physical development of the city, and it also helps the city to really review projects that come in against a framework that has been established by the general plan. And it's also really helped us to communicate the city's long-term physical development to residents and to the business community coming to Mesa. And it's really healthy when you get public hearings, you get a development community, you get your appointed boards basically talking about whether proposed development or any strategy that we are implementing, whether it meets the goals of the general plan, that center us into objective way of achieving the goals that has been established. And it helps to really educate the public and educate all the various stakeholders, it's really an education piece to say, this is what the voters and the city council have agreed on as to the way we want Mesa to grow, the way we want Mesa to be. So what is really the characteristics of the plan? If you look at the 2040 general plan, it deals with, you know, the essential physical elements of the city, and that's why we talk about transportation, infrastructure, land use, locations. And it's also very critical to know that the physical development of the city is not in an isolation. And so when we're talking about this, we, the general plan helps us to relate the social and economic forces that basically is a result of the physical development of the city as well. And it helps us to also have a long-range strategies that is considered through our projected population growth, our economic forecast as well, and also helps us through that lens to be able to identify a distance objective of how we're going to address issues that are going to be coming up as a result of our projected growth and demand. And Councilmember Luna, this may answer your question, that sometimes some of the development community actually takes this to a whole different level. The intent of the general plan is supposed to be general, and it's supposed to remain general as well, because one of the things that we do not want is constant amendments to the general plan, because then that gradually begins to shift the goals away. So both the state statute and other planning strategies really requires the general plan to still capture the vision, the goals of the city, but it's supposed to be general enough, but in circumstances where there is a need for an amendment, because the generality is still not able to capture certain trends that has come up, we are able to amend through a process. And it's supposed to really capture big ideas of the city as well. One characteristic of the general plan is also to really relate our physical design of the city, you know, that expresses our value. I know one of the things that the council has been talking about, and the planning zoning board has really been talking about for the past three years, is expression of the value of the city when it comes to physical development. How do we sustain developments that are happening in the city? That leads to what a council approved, quality development standards, and the reason why this is really critical is not because we want to make Mesa unaffordable, but we want to create an environment that really provides long-term sustainability for our community. And then, you know, it goes back to the next thing about the plan should be amendable, so every 10 years, you know, after 10 years or even within 10 years, that's likely to be setting changes, so the plan should be able to be amendable within that period as And one of the things about amending the plan is helps to capture the broad community, basically, the community goals, because as the population grows, as people move in, as, you know, the new generation comes up, sometimes there is a need to really capture their vision into the general plan as well. So we update the plan.
Excuse me, Nana, Mr. Luna has a question for you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So when we look at the general plan, obviously architectural designs change over the years. So how do you make it so it's loose enough that you're going to be adopting new architectural designs for construction? Is it loose enough that you can do that? Will it be, you know, will it be flexible enough that we would be able to do that?
Mayor Councilmember Luna, so the general plan doesn't typically address the architectural design. It talks about the city of Mesa should have design guidelines that ensures long-term sustainability and quality development standards. So if you look at the 2040 general plan, one of the recommendations of the plan was for the city to have a design guideline, so that's why two and a half years ago, the council adopted the design guidelines, which can change over time, because the goals is already established in the general plan, and then the design guidelines, which most of it is also captured in the zoning ordinance, help to really implement that goal specified in the general plan.
And those guidelines are changed over a couple of years, or, this is just hypothetical, not that, let's say sprinklers and apartments or in homes, that's something that would be a guideline, but not necessarily a general plan.
Yeah, that might not even get into the general plan, right? They have to talk about safety, you know, think about the chapters in the general plan today, the chapter kind of where housing is, is called, I think I'm getting the right one, it's called creating and maintaining a variety of great neighborhoods, and then it gets into, so it's that kind of broad sense of vision. I mean, it gets a little more into like middle-class housing and things like that, and what's missing, and what we want more of, but it's, it kind of keeps it at that pretty high level. It doesn't, then we have the other, the zoning codes and the building codes and everything else that get into the very specifics.
That complement that or reinforce the general plan.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
And also the need to update the plan is, you know, sometimes new problems comes up. I think even three and a half years ago, there were certain areas we had not projected for growth to happen as we are seeing now. So it's, the need to update the general plan becomes very important. And then, as you know, some policies in the general plan may also be unworkable or may not be realistic after its adoption, so they need to reevaluate and assess those are very important to update the plan. So this is what you're looking at, what you're looking at is really the current general plan, all the elements that are captured in the general plan, you know, it talks about the background, what the city process was for adopting the plan, it talks about creating different, you know, choice for employment, it talks about public safety, transportation, housing, I'll go for housing, I'll go for providing diverse housing, it talks about water resources, basically how we're going to manage growth in relation to water resources, it talks about economic development goals and strategies. So I was looking at this actually this morning, and I realized that back in 2014, when the general plan was approved, the job to population ratio in Maricopa was 0.4, and then ours was 0.35, and so one of the goals was for us to increase our economic, to increase the ratio, and I'm sure Bill is probably excited that, I'm sure he's increased the ratio.
He owes you one, yes. Jobs per household is one that has always been, well, when we were in this plan, that was a major goal of the council, is to improve the number of jobs in Mesa, so. Well, that was, I'm just saying, that's what was in here, right? You know, to get more, create more jobs.
So one of the things in the general plan, the current general plan, back in, before the update in 2014, the general plan was very specific when it comes to land uses, and that was very challenging, because though we had a vision, it requires a lot of amendments, and basically it was in a way steering away from the vision. So when we adopted the 2040, one of the discussions that came up through the public participation and all the various stakeholder process, is to really create what we call character area designations that is, that was intended to achieve the goals for specific areas, and one of the questions or the discussions I know we've been having with the council, the planning zoning board is example, Vice Mayor talks about, how do you create a 15-minute city? So if you look at the content of our general plan, there is a lot that is already captured in, and what I mean by that is looking at, you know, the land size that we have, the intent of the characterization was really to create that cluster of, you know, place-making or places, so you can live in B5 and basically District 5 and capture most of your needs, you can live in District 6 and capture, so, and then you go to work within those areas and all that. So one of the things this council did in about two years ago was to really strengthen those characterizations, because we were seeing how, there were a few lapses, or there were a few loopholes in really strengthening the characterization, so the council amended the general plan to really capture that. So as we embark on the update, one critical component that will be required is the public engagement or the citizen participation part of the process, it's really one of the state requirement. So in the state statute, it requires a municipality to have a written process for public involvement in the general plan update, and it's supposed to have extensive dissemination of proposal of how those interest groups are going to be involved, and then basically we're supposed to use various methods of communication. And then it's also going to go through extensive review by, you know, the city council, we have to strongly collaborate with the public schools, the state, and then our surrounding cities as well. So there's a lot of coordination, collaboration that goes on with this. So with the public engagement, some of the discussions that we've had with various departments, I think in the past couple of years, we've had various projects, various plans, and Jeff Robbins really helped with this, he's been central part of all the major part of it. So one of the things that we've been able to identify is what are the successes that we've recorded over time, what are some of the projects that really generated a lot of public participation? So true that we've been able to have some baseline of strategies to really use, to really engage and achieve a lot of public involvement. So some of the principles that we've been able to really formulate out of those various plans that you looked at previously, was forming a strong partnership with community organizations, both, you know, nonprofits, church organizations, homeowners associations, schools, the development community, and then being very intentional to really include various diverse residents, as you know Mesa is growing so much, we believe that this update is really going to be a lot of diverse interests, so we need to really make sure we capture all of them as well, and be very, be very intentional on engagement that will result in really decisions that will lead to formulation of the plan, because at the end of the day, these are the people that are also going to be voting on the plan. And so the process that we will be considering is we're going to basically have, based on the past results and the past successes, we're going to define target populations that typically don't engage, and also identify various stages, as we were saying earlier, this is going to be put on the ballot 2024, but the process is starting this fall, so we need to really define engagement objective at each stage, because we don't want people to get worn out, and then eventually, you know, when we get to the critical part of capturing the final information that they basically follow, and we will be defining all the strategies as well. And as you know, we are discussing, because of the magnitude of the process and the plan, and basically the size of the city, to really engage a consultant, to really help us with the update, but some of the things that we're going to be defining specifically is a public engagement strategies and how that can really help bring people into basically the process So some of the successes that, again, we recorded was, we realize that when you have a dedicated engagement manager, so you have really a coordinator that really coordinates all the various groups, bear in mind, this is also going in a way capture the transportation master plan update going on, the housing balance plan, the parks and recs, so there's going to be a lot of coordination, and sometimes we may capture information through the housing, transportation master plan that we need to extract and capture that as part of the general plan update, so we don't have to go back and repeat ourselves. So there's going to be all this coordination that will be needed. We plan to utilize video, digital marketing strategies, and then basically even paid social media. And then as, you know, we are already talking to various departments to really make sure that the various departments are all coordinated. I know in the council retreat, some of the discussion was to make sure that this update really capture and coordinate all the various department, transportation, parks, so this coordinator will really help to really capture and coordinate all the plan as well. And then we also, excuse me, we are, excuse me, we also planning to have various public meetings in various locations of the city, so we can capture all those, and even different times of the day, and which all help to really capture the input from the community. And then we'll be collecting, you know, voluntary contact information throughout the city, and as we go out, you know, we'll be talking to the community, we already, I know Councilmember Luna and I even met with some of the neighbors, and we are already beginning to tell them, the general plan update is coming up, we will need your input, so we are beginning, I know the other departments are also beginning, is becoming the... So we are beginning, I know the other departments are also beginning, is becoming the forefront of all of us, our discussion and coordination. So in terms of the state statute requirement, um, the, 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 the general plan is required to be updated and, um, every 10 years and supposed to be ratified by the voters as I started saying, um, and it requires read option every 10 years. That's why we have to do this and that's why we're going to go through the process as well. This is the projected timeline that we have. Uh, we are beginning basically to start the interdepartmental coordination. We are going to be forming a technical advisory committee to really be the center of helping with all the various, um, coordination that will be going on. We will be issuing an RFP, um, that will also be involved in various departments and all that to really make sure comprehensively we capture everything that is supposed to be going on. And then we'll be forming sub element focus groups. So there will be, there will be discussion with several, I mean, almost all the council members for you to help us identify various people to really be, um, part of the sub groups. And then we'll go through 2023, we're projecting that to be the extensive citizen participation, various meetings and all that. Um, and then ultimately the goal is to bring it to city council in the spring or summer of 2024 for council to basically adopt the plan and then we'll be put on the ballot for ratification in the general elections in November. So that is the process, it's just beginning and, um, I'll be ready for any questions. I also have the rest of the departments here as well.
Great, thank you very much. I'm sure we've got lots of questions for you. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Nana. I appreciate the presentation, uh, because I remember being the 2014 presentation. And I appreciate that you're going to be using social media at that time. I don't think we had a robust social media to get the word out. And I attended various, some of the charrettes where they, um, they illustrated what the general plan was all about, but the attendance is very poor. And so you're, you're going to obviously have to use social media to get the word out to let the community know, uh, you know, about the general plan and how important it is for the city. One of my biggest worries has always been manufactured homes, trailer parks. Is that going to be addressed in the plan? Are we going to be dealing with that? Because I think that's, that's something that worries me, that gives me heartburn uh, as we move towards the future.
I think it's actually even addressed in the current one.
Okay.
About how to plan for the future
Right.
of those and what's the eventual alternative to that.
Right, because land use of course is important as well as housing. Our housing stock continues to be an issue here in the city of Mesa and we need to be able to address that and I, and hopefully the plan will be, will be addressing that as we move forward.
Yes, um, thank, Mr. Brady answered the question. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman and then Ms. Spilsbury.
Since I haven't been around for one of these, I think most of us haven't, how much does it change each time? Like, does it, does it change drastically? Does it kind of stay the same? Like, what's, what's been the history of that?
Well, since I've been here for more than 10 years, on the edges, yes, there are certainly opportunities because we know that there's different trends. But when you read in here about the water portfolio, pretty much the same, although we'll highlight some opportunities on the edges. You know, as we were talking about this before me, this president brought this presentation to council is Mesa is going to, I don't know what we're projecting, but we're getting close to build out, right? I mean, not tomorrow. Is it in the next 10 years? Maybe not, but we're getting that close, right? So we kind of, we need to start thinking about that because we're not, it's about a lot of infill and reuse, I think is a better way of talking about the plan now, kind of has to start focusing on that. We don't have a lot of, you know, new frontiers of large open spaces. We kind of did the largest and last big annexation when we did the Oz crossing the inner loop, right? So that may be something that we think about as we're going forward, but kind of bread and butter of this is Mesa, here is Mesa and it's kind of planning for the future, wouldn't you say, Nana?
Mayor, council member, that's correct. One of the things we've been discussing or have been discussing with the city manager is infill development and revitalization of various areas in the city because we are running out of greenfield areas. So now how do we really look at areas that needs revitalization? So the redevelopment area plans, even the transit, um, the ground that we've got, which so the grand door has a project, a long term, there are immediate benefits that we're going to be looking to, to really enhance those areas. So those are all the things that we're really going to focus on as part, part of the plan.
So I'm assuming the current plan probably talks about infill and stuff, but we would just make it a little bit more in depth.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, cool. And then how, like, what type of statistics or data do you use looking forward? Like, I'm sure in our current 10 year plan, we weren't anticipating this crazy housing crisis we're in right now and so we didn't plan for that. It could go the other way, right? Like, if you built too much housing, so like, what, how do we, what kind of things do we look at for projections of what might happen?
Mayor, council, one of the things we would do as part of the balanced housing plan is a wind chill survey. So the wind chill survey considers your projected population, your housing stock, your housing inventory, and then we, through that information, we can project the housing needs. And housing is basic need, it's a basic need and so we'll look at that as a critical component. But in addition to that, we also have to look at the balance with our, you know, the economic development ratio because we want people to live here and work here. So typically that always become the challenge and that's why I always have fun with Bill because at the end of the day, you know, we need to make sure that we have a complete balanced city that really becomes sustainable. So those are the things that we'll be looking to balance those two.
Yeah, and I'll just, in, in here, I can't find, I don't know what chapter it's in, there's a strong statement from the economic advisory board that they put in this that says cities should, you know, aggressively, you know, avoid taking residential zone properties and zoning for, or, sorry, I'm doing it the wrong way, taking, converting what is commercial into residential.
I'm well aware of that.
And so, I'm just saying that's, so that's part of the conversation, right, is it's that balance of, because the concern 10 years ago was there weren't enough jobs in Mesa, right? There was a lot of housing. I don't know that it wasn't, like you're saying, it's not the discussion about affordability, frankly, was the opposite, was the concern was Mesa was the low, lower end of housing and we were trying to attract higher end market rate executive housing so we could attract the jobs. Because the goal was, again, looking at the model of Mesa, right? Residential development in and of itself isn't necessarily a strength of, on the financing side of Mesa, the idea who needed more commercial, we needed more jobs so that we could have people spending money in Mesa. That was the concern because it was putting a lot of stress on the city's financial model. So that was kind of, you know, I'm just telling you, 10 years ago plus, that was the perspective. Now, obviously, things can change, but those are all the things that, and I think the goal is, and I think Nana said, is that balance, right? You can't skew one way or the other. There's somewhere in there, every, a healthy, sustainable community has to have some element of all those things.
So it's figuring out how to come to that now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Oh, no, I thought it was going to be quick.
Thank you, Julie, for those comments. So, Nana, as we define the overall strategies and tactics for each of them, and I appreciate, you know, engaging in consultants, uh, some of the meetings I've been in, um, in board meetings that we have probably sustainable growth in our, in, in the Phoenix metropolitan area for about 12 years. So maximum about 12 years of sustainable growth and then after that it kind of tapers off and then we're going to be, have to figure out what we need to do next. But you mentioned growth and it needs to be sustainable and in the PowerPoint the mayor brought up on the elements, both on water and, uh, and reducing the physical impact of growth on number five. What, can you explain those a little bit more in PowerPoint four? Talk about a water element and then in PowerPoint five it says, talks about reduces the physical impact of growth and in your opinion, how do you interpret that?
Mayor, council member Freeman, so when we talk about reducing the physical impact of growth, you have to look at the existing infrastructure and see how much you can maximize those infrastructures. So one example we talk about is infill, if you look at, looking at infill, you already do have the infrastructure and most of your infill areas, you already have your transportation network. So one of the ways that we have to start looking at our city really is, are those areas maximized? Are we maximizing the highest and best use of those locations? Because you wouldn't have to extend water line to, you know, that extent for new development. So that's one way of minimizing the impact of physical development and looking at areas that are really appropriate to maximize the highest and best use. So example, you look at sometimes your major intersections and some of the things that sometimes we get proposal that we get is for example, mini storage. You already have infrastructure there, mini storage doesn't use a lot of water or sewer lines and it's very, very visible, it has all the fiber, you know, optics and all that. The question becomes, that's not the highest way to basically minimize the impact of physical development. So we encourage uses that will result in the highest and best use. In terms of the water resources element, it's actually well defined in the state statute, what are the elements that are supposed to be in basically, but I know, uh, water resources is here to really specifically answer that question. So before I get out of my lane, I will invite.
Here's Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Freeman. As Nana mentioned, one of the, the key provisions of the water element in statute is that you need to have legally and physically available water. And for the city of Mesa as well as other cities in the Phoenix AMA, we have to have a 100 year water designation and that's renewed every 15 years. And again, we have to go through the exercise of proving that we have legally, physically available water for 100 years. And we also have the physical or the, the financial capacity to put in infrastructure to meet demands out 100 years for build out. And so a, a big provision of the general plan for water resources is we do our master plan, water master plan, you know, quite frequently and we build upon the general plan and the land uses that are identified in there. Those land uses we go through and we study those and determine what the water demands for each land use would be. And so for 100 years, we've, we've applied our water supplies expecting build out. And so what we have available legally and physically today, we have sufficient amount to meet demands into the future. Now, that doesn't mean that zoning or land uses will change over time as we've seen in southeast Mesa, but that's a reason why Mesa has always had the policy of going out and ensuring we had a diverse water portfolio. We don't solely rely on one water supply. So as we know in the media today, the Colorado River, you know, we're seeing some shortages, but that's not our only supply. We have quite a bit of resources on the SRP system. We have other supplies, groundwater, which we use for, you know, emergency purposes. But we've also invested not, not only in SRP system, but others where we're gaining additional supplies that can be used across the city. So what we've done internally with our master plan, building on the general plan, is we've ensured that we meet this key element, you know, in state statute that, you know, we are a viable community and we will continue to be so in the future.
So thank you. You know, I, I look at water being the lifeblood of any community. I mean, we wouldn't be living here if we didn't have water. So we got to look at future development and how it can impact our, our water constraints, you know, in the future. So I hope that we have some language written, written in there. You know, we're great on water conservation, storage and development and we have our well sites and like you say, our water portfolios that we have. And I just wanted to make sure in the general plan that, does it say that, anything about the assured 100 year supply about water and having that? Because that's a state statute, right?
Yes. Yep, it does.
So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of the growth and the concerns out there in the community because there's always growing, there's growing concern with the Colorado River, the DCP and, and other shortages. But as we participate in other water portfolios to strengthen our commitment to providing water to our city, that's what I, I'd like to see in there. So when we define our overall strategies, just make sure that we get it all done right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Reddy.
I think my comment is kind of the pre, uh, as far as the info on outreach, uh, how, you know, the general plan is such, I think, for, uh, for your residents, such an abstract kind of vision and it's hard to kind of land on, like, how do I input on a general plan that is so big, right? So being intentional on how do we use visuals, how do we use interactive, uh, guidance and information, I think it's going to be critical, uh, for us to have residents kind of understand how they own a general plan in their city, right? Uh, so that, I think, leading up to 2024 is, it's important aspect, the intentionality of how do we make it, uh, a visual concept that people can understand of why, because we're already making this effort, a big effort to, you know, go out, outreach, talk to residents, stakeholders. So the importance of kind of having some ownership as they vote in, in, in 2024 is an important aspect to that piece. And then in, in the hope of passing that is how do we, how do we make it, uh, more interactive as, as a plan, right? Just searching general plans across different cities is just a 200 to 400 page document, right? And it's very dense and it's very, very, uh, uh, I would say dense, right? It's, uh, but it's really good information, right? It's something that I've used just to go back and, and see, uh, you know, what's in the general plan as far as, uh, a lot on the, on the planning and zoning pieces and, and kind of use of, of land for, for Mesa. But I, I think we got to think, how do we make it more engaging, not just be a, a document that's 250 pages that lives on the website, right? Uh, how do we, you know, how do we use elements like our data portal, where we can transform the general plan, where we can reference people and stakeholders and people that want to develop here as far as in the future to utilize that aspect of, of the vision that voters are voting on, right? So I think that's going to be critical on how do we develop those strategies for the future, uh, to be more interactive with our functions of, of these, these planning processes because a lot of it's, you know, these documents that, uh, I think you all, uh, as the city staff use, which is important, but I think also we need to remind ourselves, how do we, how do we make it a usable, uh, uh, reference for, for everybody else, right? So.
Amen, thank you. Vice Mayor.
I think that was a great comment, Councilmember Reddy. And, you know, maybe having those hyperlinks relating to the materials and what you're discussing, so I really like that, appreciate that, thank you. Overall, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to set a vision of who we are as Mesa. Certainly we can say from 10 years ago, we are a different city than we are today. There was a time and we're still fighting this old reputation that we were a bedroom community, it was boring, nothing to do. Uh, I think we have so many things going on through, uh, economics and education and opportunity that we are a different city. So as we look forward, what is that vision? I don't know if we've necessarily set a vision before for Mesa. We've maybe, I, I love that we have our character areas and we're doing a great job with those, but the overarching, who we are as a large city in the United States that's larger than many of our cities that you hear of, the Atlantas or Austons and Miami. Okay, it is, okay. Well, many famous cities and Mesa's on in there. So I think we have an opportunity to set who we are and where, where we're going. My, in my priorities, I care about the sustainability of the city, environmentally, of course, economically and equitably and, um, what we can do in pairing that together and integrating it, that in our plan. As you mentioned, finding that ratio of homes and jobs, but also the integration of transportation and as we discussed, the water, to make sure that everything meshes together and, and provides a healthy plan that we have, like I had mentioned before in strategic planning, we have our transportation plans, we have our housing plans, we have all these plans, but But all impact the other as far as how they all fit together. And to be sensitive to that and make sure that they mesh to be a comprehensive, solid plan. I'm kind of glad that we're running out of space and, and we can stop some sprawl. More so for, I mean, there's environmental reasons, but certainly for the fiscal health of our city that bonding for all our infrastructure that we need in order for, to accommodate the sprawl, we're going to pay that off. And then as soon as we pay it off, we're going to get into the maintenance of all that new infrastructure. So it really impacts our city, not only in the immediate, but in the forever future. Capitalizing on infrastructure we already have and seeing what we can do to make it its best certainly contributes to the fiscal health of our city. I'm excited to get started on the process. And I think most everything has been said. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember, Vice Mayor. One of the things in the current general plan, there was extensive discussion about vision and goals of the city. And again, 10 years ago, like you said, there were various discussions. So as part of this process where we are going to engage the council and we are going to engage the community. And because of even certain exciting things that are happening in the city may help us to even be a little bit more adventurous than we've been before. We've seen a lot of improvement in our downtown. So some of the things that 10 years ago may not have been a discussion. Now we are able to have a discussion because we can point to certain projects in the downtown. So that will help us to definitely revisit that vision as well. And then Councilmember Reddian, if, one of the things, you know, I was talking to my former Volch Christian last week. And she said she doesn't watch study session, but she's going to watch the study section. And I'm sure she's going to be very excited that you said this because one of the things she said, well, she's always, it's her vision that the general plan will be 15 pages. And I told her, if you look at the elements that are required, even if you just list the element, that's 15 pages itself. But she'll be very excited to hear you saying that. But on a more serious note, yes, that's one of the goals that we're going to have because the, we are towards a path of being very successful when you have various members of the community, various stakeholders discussing that whether a proposal, whether any project or any action really complies with the general plan. That's really critical. And to be able to attract all those involved, I mean, groups, we need to really make the general plan very understandable and very accessible. I know one of the things that Councilmember Freeman does is when they have people, new people moving to Lehigh, they give them the Lehigh suburbia plan. And that's a way of saying, this is the goals that has been established. So we will make ourselves available as we go through this process.
Thank you, Nana. I couldn't agree with my colleague over here on my left, Councilmember Reddian. I'm going to throw something out there, it's sort of crazy. But yes, I went to Dreamscape and I go, wouldn't it be cool if we did a general plan that you could actually see what the future is going to be like? And maybe work with, we, we're going to open this school that's going to be next door to us and maybe have a student create a virtual reality of what the future is going to be like. And I know going, attending, going to a charrette and having people go and put the glasses on and seeing what the future might be like would be certainly enticing because that's, we need, we need civic engagement. And the only way to get that is to provide them what a vision is going to be like. Because you don't necessarily want to, you know, you're not going to read a document like that. I mean, it's, it's a challenge. But if you have something, you know, I'm, my background's in television, it's visual. So you have to have some kind of visual presentation that's going to be enticing. And if you can work with a student that's going to be at the Sidney Portier School, develop some kind of virtual reality of what the future might look like, that may be something enticing to get more civic engagement. And if you could do it in both languages, that would be awesome. If you did both Spanish and English.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't that be cool? Instead of being chased by a dinosaur?
Well, I think everything's been said, but not everyone said it. So there's a few things I'll just focus on. I'm, I'm still kind of stuck on the first question we asked at the beginning of the morning, which is, what's our horizon for this? Is it going to be 2040? Is it going to be 2050? Because it seems like that's a, a relevant question, you know? And I don't know what the answer to that is.
Mayor, I think it, it almost, to me, is intuitive. If we, 10 years ago, we're looking out to 2040, we should look to 2050, which I think gets closer to our climate action plan kind of goals too. So I don't know, it just seems kind of, we just keep pushing that out 10 years, so.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, this is a vision, right? I mean, at some point, you go to, you can't, you can go so far and you really, you know, just like 10 years ago, we had other ideas and 10 years from now, there'll be different ideas. So anyway, that's could be a perspective.
I, I don't disagree with that. I just think we need to decide, you know?
Sure. 2050 sounds kind of cool for branding purposes too, so.
So Nana asked the question earlier, when do we think we're going to hit build out? And I, I'm not that that maybe ought to be the year that we focus on because like you were saying, there's still lots of infill. I mean, what will always, the, the general plan will always be relevant even when we're past build out. But that would, it'd be good to remind us what, and I know it's still an aspect, right?
We've had a number out there, I know from the water utilization. We'll have to, but we probably need to go update that, Mayor, and bring that back to you. But there is a rate, no, with the rate of pace of development right now, it may be a little different, but we could, that's something we can, we can map out. We can kind of see what's out there.
I think we're starting to see that, right? I mean, we're starting to realize in, even in Southeast Mesa, we're running out of dirt. And so at the end is insight. So that, that'll be interesting to, to get your thoughts on that. And a little bit on, on Councilmember Reddian's comment about how big ought this to be and, you know, how usable ought it to be? And I think that the temptation here is to talk about everything, right? And I'm not sure that that's the most useful document because it has to focus on land use and the physicality and the, the landscape. But, but still, as, as this slide indicates, you know, the, the kitchen sink, you know, can really be thrown into that topic, particularly when you get to the public service elements. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not saying anything profound. I'm just kind of saying that's, this is going to be tough to fit, you know, all, to address all of that.
Mayor, Council. So one of the things that if you read the current general plan window is so substantial, most of the detailed elements is really reflected in the parks master plan, the transportation master plan. So what we try to do is address this requirement, but we summarize the intent and the goals and the details are more really embedded in those plans.
And really, when you read this, each chapter is just, they're fairly short chapters, right? I mean, there's, how many chapters? 15 chapters, but they're all, it doesn't take long to get through a chapter. But it's almost like you have the statutory required general plan. But then I think to your point, Council Reddian, is then we create this, we do this on the budget and some other complicated documents. Then we create kind of the, I don't know what we want to call it, but the public document, right? The user friendly, it's not necessarily, has to comply with this and it's not necessarily trying to do exactly what this does, but it's trying to do more the communication and the engagement. And I think we can, we could do that. And I think that's a great, create a platform where someone could go in and see what Mesa looks like, whether, with a variety of different mediums and platforms, we could do that. But this would just be kind of, we wouldn't try to, I mean, this has to be submitted and legal requirements. But I think what we're trying to express here in the vision, we could do something a little more creative and engaging, so.
Yeah, I think as long as we're doing community engagement. For example, I saw some of the slides up of the Imagine Mesa experience we went through a few years ago. I thought that was wonderful. And that was a pretty broad, you know, community survey. And so if, if we're going to hire a consultant, maybe even pollsters, you know, to, to go and, and do a, a scientific poll of our community that reflects the diversity of our community, let's ask, you know, while we got their attention, let's throw a few more questions in there and see if we can gather some data that might have application beyond the general plan update. On the topic of housing, I, I, I think we're all feeling pressure to, because, you know, the, the housing shortage is a part of all of our lives right now. We know lots of younger families and people that, that just are, it's crazy, you know, trying to find a place to live. But at the same time, I think we want diverse housing. We, we don't want to succumb to the temptation, you know, where 10 years from now, people will say, oh yeah, look, back in the, in the 2020s, they built an apartment complex on every possible piece of property in the entire city. And, and now the housing diversity is out of whack, right? And so absolutely, we need to add housing units. But I think we need to do it in the context of, we want diverse housing. We want market rate housing, we want workforce housing, we want multifamily, we want owner occupied. And so I, I, I'm curious to hear, what is our housing mix? And, and are we out of whack already in some ways? You know, what do we need to place emphasis on? Just so that we're a healthy community that, that has diverse housing stock.
And Mayor, you and I had this conversation too. It's not as if the development of housing has really slowed down.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not, it's not that there's policies, despite what you might hear, that the city has or how we process things that has somehow slowed down the inventory of new housing in Mesa, Arizona. We're keeping pace with, the last three years has been very consistent and frankly, as competitive or more competitive than most of the communities across the area. So there's other factors that are driving this, right? It's not the fact that there's not less inventory coming out on the market. Because Nana will tell you, his people are as busy as they've ever been, right? And so we have to, we have to work with that, Mayor, because it's, there is some kind of, you know, perceptions out there that somehow nothing's happening and we're all constricted. Well, even the development committee hasn't, doesn't have the capacity to build all the housing they would think that they could do just because of supply chain, labor, construction costs, all those things. So there's a balance in there and we do need to consider the balance of the types of housing. But I just want to assure the council, it's like, from what we have coming through and what we're processing, it's, it's steady and high for the last three to five years. So we're, the inventory is still being built. The man may be outstripping that, but it's still continuing.
Yeah, not to downplay the problem. We want to build, we all understand there's a housing crisis. We get it. And, but I, I think there, certain industries are trying to use this to their advantage. You don't, you know, just wipe out all zoning requirements because there's a housing shortage. It is maybe perhaps has more to do with, with the, with the building materials and with the house, with the workforce. I mean, there's inflation, there's a, it's a complex set of issues that's contributing to this. And eliminating zoning requirements is not going to make things better. Other topics that I'm looking at, infrastructure obviously is, is one of the topics that we're going to be discussing. I just, just, I'll harp again on the fact that with the bipartisan infrastructure bill, there's a lot of money coming our, to local governments for things like electric vehicle infrastructure. I, I hope that that's a topic that's discussed in, in some of the other opportunities, the kind of unique opportunities with the infrastructure plan right now. How can we take full advantage of, of that? Homelessness, I was at the, the MAGA meeting yesterday where we talked about the point in time count that has been released and it's a 35% increase over two years, which is consistent with the year before. But we've kind of had a 16% increase over the last several years. The thing that's a little bit sobering about that is over the last two years, we've had this extraordinary amount of federal money coming in. We've had a moratorium on evictions. We, the city of Mesa has passed out, what, I think, what, to $30 million?
Forty, forty. Hadly $40 million in help assistance.
Yes.
So in spite of passing out $40 million, the, the house, you know, the homelessness rate has not been slowed down. And so that's sobering. And so it makes me think we, we need to have, include that in, in this plan. And not that we want to increase the number of homeless, but I think we want to, we don't want to have unsheltered homeless. So to what extent do we have the, the number of beds or the number of facilities in our community that's appropriate for the size and for the, the increasing demand that we have on that? The, the emphasis in past years on jobs per household, I think continues to be a relevant question that we need to address. I don't know if we're closer to where, I suspect we're closer to where we want to be than we have been a decade ago. But, but I think that's a number we need to remind ourselves that it's very relevant to all of this. So I'm, I'm sure we'll have many meetings over the next year or two as we prepare this. And I'm looking forward to lots, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to ask a lot of questions and to give some thoughtful planning to our future. So thank you for all the work that it has and we'll go into this. Council, any other questions before we move on? And I hope you're going to be blowing out some candles at some point today.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks. We, we are really excited. This is one of the great, exciting things that we, we can do as a planning division. So we're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. I know council has been very busy. Who would like to begin? Mr. Luna.
I've mentioned this already, but I did go to Dreamscape, which is totally cool. So I, I hope, I hope my colleagues had the opportunity to go. I was chased by some kind of dinosaur, but what a remarkable thing, virtual reality. And, and what's exciting is that they're going to hopefully build those kind of, those kind of productions over here in our new school. So that's really exciting. So if you ever have a chance to do it, do it. Okay, so anyway, that was really cool. Yesterday, I had coffee with the cops over at Habajava Northeast Mesa. It was well attended. We had a lot of people there, a lot of constituents asked questions about the city of Mesa. And I do want to thank Mesa Police Department as well as Antonia, my assistant, for putting that together. We had a really good turnout.
Great, thank you. Ms. Duh?
Yes. On Tuesday, I did a tour of Native American Fatherhood and Families Association at their new location near Country Club and Southern and, and got an update on their services. I toured it a few years ago and I am so impressed with this organization and all that they do. If you have a chance, check them out on the website. I'm, I just love that they're, the work they do and they're here in Mesa. And last night, I attended the Keller Elementary Spring Into Reading Night, an exciting night where all the families came together. There was entertainment and such, but the kids were able to get a bag of books, starting at their level and going into grades forward. Keep with them at their home and that especially helps with the summertime so they can increase their reading skills and explore what's ahead and, and get them excited about reading. And I think you mentioned the Mayor's Youth Present.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Julie.
On Tuesday, I got to go on the SRP watershed helicopter tour and that was so cool. That was one of the better perks of this job, I think. It was super fun. I got to sit in the front and we went all the way, saw all the watersheds, saw the seven dams. I didn't even, I've lived in Mesa my whole life and I didn't, I've never seen Apache Lake because it's kind of stuck there between Roosevelt and Canyon. And I'd never even seen it. And so it was super cool. Anyways, it was just amazing to see like what goes into getting our water and I loved that experience. And I really loved the Mayor's Youth Committee experience that we had that night as well. But I'll let you speak to that.
But I was looking forward to more about the dam helicopter ride.
Yes. Oh, you don't know how hard it was for me not to say any damn jokes on that trip. But I kept myself professional. I just mentioned it now though, so there.
Well, thank you. Several council members did help with our, the kind of the culminating event with the Mayor's Youth Committee this week. This is a great program that we get a lot of wonderfully talented youth that participate and the culmination of that. And so all year, all school year, they learn more about the city of Mesa. A lot of the staff that are in this room participate in, in sharing with them, you know, things that, more information about how the city government works. And then we ask them to kind of bring their, their youthful perspective to, to, to give us some ideas and some recommendations. And so they break up into group and give very polished presentations to, to council. And there were some, there's always wonderful ideas that, that, that find their way really being into implemented in, in the, in the city quite often. So that was certainly the case a couple, was it a couple of days ago? We had that experience. So thank you to council and thank you to staff for all the work that you put into to support the Mayor's Youth Committee. I know we've talked about, we're exploring ways to maybe strengthen that program and find ways to, to include more kids and to have, give them more opportunities. So that, that's something we'll continue to work on. But, but thank you for all the support that you've given that program so far. Anything else you'd like to? Anything else you'd like to share, council? Mr. Haredia?
A quick shout out to the transportation folks, bike and pedestrian program. Yesterday, Adams Elementary, they had a walk to school day. There's like 150 kids out there, the whole school party walked to, to school that morning, yesterday morning. So, really successful event. So, thanks for PD and, and the transportation folks for organizing that. And then, also, quick update on, as folks know, I'm the Chair of the Valley Metro Board. And recently, we, we voted in a new CEO that's coming in next month in, in the retirement of former Mesa Mayor Scott Smith. He has a couple more weeks left as a CEO and then transition over the next couple months. So, just a quick update on that end. So, wish Mr. Scott Smith a, a good retirement. Still has a couple, couple more months on, on Valley Metro, but definitely served the Valley Metro Agency over the last six years in, in a great way and improving transportation across the valley, so.
Absolutely. We, we express our appreciation to Mayor Smith for his ongoing service and his great career at Valley Metro. And Frankie, thank you for the thankless task of being the Chairman of.
Both boards, yeah.
Yeah, both boards. That's a, that's a full-time job in addition to being on council, so thank you for your service there. Council, anything else to share on that agenda item? If not, Mr. Brady, what is our future meeting schedule?
So, there is a Audit and Finance Enterprise Committee meeting following this meeting, and then we'll recommune again next Thursday at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Haredia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.